Okay, welcome.
This conference will now be recorded.
Welcome to the June 8, 2020 Meeting of the Board of Selectmen. This meeting is being recorded. Is anyone else recording this? Please let us know. Hearing none. Let's move on to our first agenda item, which is a moment of silence to acknowledge the death of Auburn Police Officer Ron Tarantino in the line of duty in 2016. Thank you. Our next item is a moment of silence for our fallen veterans and their loved ones, those suffering from or who lost their lives to COVID-19, essential businesses, essential workers, first responders, and those who are in need. Thank you. Our first item under Board of Selectmen General Items is a transient vendor application for Juniper Farms Ice Cream. We do have an application. Is there someone representing Juniper Farms on the phone?
Hi, yes, I am.
Can you just state your name?
It's Cassia.
Okay. Can you just give us a brief description of what you're doing?
Yep, so we run Juniper Farms Ice Cream Truck. Sell ice cream through different towns in the Middlesex area and usually out in Auburn. Prepackaged ice cream from New England Ice Cream.
Okay. We do have a memo from DCG. You have seen that, have you not? You have a copy of the DCG memo that was sent to the board?
No, I don't think so. Maybe.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah?
Hi, Mr. Carpent. Darlene Coyle.
Hello, Mr. Coyle. Would you like to speak to? Yes, would you like to speak to the memo?
Sure. I just, thank you so much. I just wanted to let you know that Juniper Farms has been licensed in the town of Auburn in the past. And they are going through the process of being licensed with the Board of Health currently. And I do believe that we have been in contact with Cassia earlier today. So there have been some emails back and forth. And I believe Cassia just sent over some of the items that we're looking for. And our health inspector is in contact. So we will work through that process. But I believe that they had to renew their license with the Board of Selectmen because it had expired, if that's correct.
That is what I see in our notes here. Okay, well, thank you, Mrs. Coyle. Are there any board questions? More comments on this?
I'll make the motion, Lionel Berthium. I'll make a motion that we approve the license, provided that all requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall validate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions recommended by the DPD to be placed on the license.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay, Mrs. Goodrich, we're under discussion. Please go ahead.
The chairman to Mrs. Coyle. Are there any specific precautions that need to be taken? Is this an ice cream truck that's going through neighborhoods or is it parked in the designated area? And are there any specific precautions required by the Board of Health during this period?
Thank you for the question. So the, once we have all of the paperwork from the ice cream vendor, we will then schedule a pre-operational inspection, which will include reviewing all of the COVID precaution requirements. And the ice cream vendors, as you may recall, have to go through a process with the police department to make sure that the person who is driving the truck around town has been reviewed. So that process will happen. We make sure that all of the paperwork is placed before we even get to the inspection. Does that answer what? Does that answer your question?
If I may, Mr. Chairman. I'm just, you know, I'm just more, my own query is more about, you know, going to a neighborhood, envision, you know, an ice cream truck ringing a bell and lots of children coming out running. And I'm just wondering if there are any safety precautions that you require at this time that we need to include in our condition? Whether it's social distancing or whatever. I mean, how would our ice cream trucks handle that?
Do you want me to speak on behalf of that?
Yeah, is the question for the vendor or for the Board of Health, Ms. Goodrich?
Well, it was to the Board of Health. But if the applicant wants to answer it, and then if it's acceptable to the Board of Health, then I'm okay.
Okay, yeah, so we have all of our drivers. We have a clear sign of COVID precautions with what we kind of want them to do. Obviously, this is very new for our town, but we want to try to protect the drivers themselves and also our communities. We have a bin system set up for retrieving ice creams. Where we pick up, we take the order from the office, then grab the ice cream with tongs and put it into a bin, and then kind of pass it or dump it into the people's hands. I know it doesn't sound pretty, but it's been working. Where we don't have to contact at all, no one's touching anything. The drivers are always wearing gloves, a mask. And then same thing with money, where the customer places money into these other bin systems. They're all color coordinated and we have everything laid out exactly. And if the driver does happen to touch the money instead of just dumping it out, they're required to take off their gloves and get new gloves on, sanitize. They're always encouraged to frequently sanitize the ice cream sort of, not window, counter. And then the same thing with all the surfaces in pied, which are aluminum. And as far as social distancing, we're asking customers to maintain social distancing. And we have clear signs saying that. We also have signs asking customers to remember to wear their mask. And just we're kind of making sure that each is well done with each stop. As far as your question regarding going around in neighborhoods, the drivers do have routes in Auburn, or in the past they have, hopefully this year too. But we also operate ongoing to people's parties, which I'm not sure how popular that will be this summer, following the governor's standards. We'll be in touch with the Board of Health and what different towns are comfortable allowing, but also our company as a whole. We're aiming to see what is working.
Thank you. And Mr. Chairman, I just have one final question. You did mention drivers. Will there be more than one truck in Auburn?
Can I say more than one truck in Auburn? That's okay. I know it's kind of different not being in the room together.
I don't know how these work, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
There's only one, because we understand that it needs to be inspected and have the same registration, and then same driver.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, is there any further recommendations from the Board of Health? Mr. Berthium?
Before Darlene gets started, you know, all's on here chirping, chirping, chirping. If you're not talking, could you please either mute your phone or mute your mic? I can see that there's at least seven open mics here. And it just, I believe we're getting a lot of feedback because of it. So if you want to talk, then come on, talk, please.
Thank you. All right, that sounds a little better. Okay, Mrs. Coyle, if you would.
Oh, thank you. So the, what Cassia is describing is part of her operation plan for COVID precautions. I do know that the state has just come down with some protocols for food trucks. And those will be incorporated. So any additional signage, any handling of money and food. I believe Cassia's application is for prepackaged ice cream. This truck is not for soft serve. So they will be packaged individually, ice cream. And the inspection will go through and make sure that all of the protocols that the state has put into place for ice cream trucks will be followed.
Thank you. Our board members have any further questions? Hearing none. We have a motion, we have a second. By roll call vote, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, it is unanimous. Thank you very much, and thank you for the information, Cassia and Mrs. Coyle. It's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have several staff members on items on tonight. So I'm going to ask for a motion to move up and take in sequence these items. Item Board of Selectmen, item 5G, followed by Town Manager, item 6A, 6D, then followed by Board of Selectmen, item 5D and 6B. Is there a motion?
Second that, just please announce which one we're on, because it's kind of all over the place. So as you get to them, just let us know which one you're.
I didn't hear a motion, so I'm.
Mrs. Goodrich made the motion and Mr. Berthium seconded it.
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Goodrich? Okay, Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. There seems to be an awful lot of interference on the line. I'm having a hard time hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to look to see who's not muted here. So as soon as we get to the next item, I'm just going to step out for a minute and make sure we call those who are not muted. There are a couple that are not. And that could be because of the static.
Oh, okay. So we are on item 5G, which is the report of a, on a special town election for the two vacancies on the board. Board members have received a report from the town clerk. And Mrs. Grimo is on the phone if we should have any questions. So let's start the process. To Mrs. Grimo, do you want to start off? Is there anything that you want to say before we ask questions?
No, I mean, I gave the report. I gave you different scenarios. If you take a vote tonight, it has to be 64 days out at least. So if you were to take one and wanted one in August, the earliest you can have it would be August 11. But I'm open to any questions that you would like. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Thank you, Mrs. Grimo. I'm going to open it up to board members. Do board members have any questions for the town clerk?
Mr. Chair, I did review all of the notes that Mrs. Grimo put together as far as the going, you know, between special election and a dual election. And there's a couple things that I kind of feel are important. One is, I feel it's important that we, you know, where we have a primary, we just had a May election, then we have a primary, and then we have an actual election in November. And to put a special election being a third or fourth election, I think it's kind of tough to ask the voters to do that. I feel that we should combine, you know, the special election with the primary election for a couple of reasons. One is, you know, it's kind of mentioned that in our notes that a special election, you know, doesn't have to be the full amount of time. But being the fact that we're voting in two selectmen, you know, two of key decision makers and leaders in our town, you know, I think it's a very important election. And I think that we need to give that election the full amount of time that we would give any other election, number one. And number two, I feel that, you know, we would get a better turnout if people had to be going for the primary anyway. It's something that we can, you know, get out there and get the word out that we, you know, you can kind of kill two birds with one stone. And hopefully, we will get a much better turnout by having them go and be able to vote on two different things at once. Looking at, you know, the cost and everything, I tried to go down through the notes and put a spreadsheet together of single election versus dual election. And maybe Mrs. Dubois can help us. But, you know, I'm looking at that, the LHS programming, whether we go with a single special election or whether we go with a dual election is going to cost us about $1,500. The auto mark programming, if the state allows us to use that same machine, then if we go with the dual election, we wouldn't have the expense of that because the state provides it for us. So either way, if we went with a special election, that would be $1,500 to the town. It looks like, you know, we're going to need probably 30 and maybe even a few more poll workers for the dual election. And I don't see us needing a lot less for a special election. We might need a few more if it's a dual election. But we'll save some money there by not having people work twice in two days. And then looking at the 7,000 ballots, I'm assuming that that's what the state gives us for the primary or the federal gives us for the primary. And so matching that, we would end up having to have the same 7,000 ballots for the special election. And so based on, you know, the whole cost being, I think it was like 9,400 or 9,800, I figured that to be about $1,800. So that was going to be the same cost to us whether we had a single election or a dual election. So I guess, you know, I'm not really seeing the, you know, I'd rather have it all in one day. And so I'll turn it over to Ms. Dubois, because I might be missing something here. So, but that's just how I read the whole thing. So just so you know how I'm breaking it all down. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Dubois.
Mr. Berthium, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. First of all, it's Deb Grimo. Not Deb Dubois.
I'm still on that.
Yeah, no problem. Anyways, so to clarify, the 7,000 ballots are for the town election. So for the state election, if you're talking to have it on the primary, the state orders typically are approximately three ballots per registered voter. We have 12,000 registered voters. So I don't know if I would order more than 7,000. I may need to order 7,000, because we should have one ballot for every voter that comes to the primary. So the state orders a lot more ballots than I would be ordering. However, there are four different ballots for the state primaries. In addition to the state doing the cost for the auto mark, yeah, they do the cost of the auto mark on the state side. We still have to program for the town. So every cost that the town is going to have for a dual election still has to be paid by the town. Does that make, does that clarify anything?
Okay, so basically, whether we have a single election, a special election, the auto mark programming is going to be, let's say $1,500 was the number that you.
Yeah, I mean, I told you what it costs for the town election, give or take. I can't give an exact figure until I know how many people are on the ballot. And, you know, it comes down to that kind of stuff. But we still have to pay for it. The town would still have to pay their portion for the town election. So anything that the town is doing, even if it's on a dual election the same day as a state election, we still have to pay for it.
Okay, so my point being there, if I could through the chair, being that the cost is going to be the same whether we do a special election for like the LHS programming, for the auto mark programming, and possibly for the 7,000 ballots that we would have for the special election or whether we had the special election at the same time for the dual. So our costs on those particular items would be the same. So our, so I guess the question is then, what is, give me your thoughts, if you would, on the 30 poll workers? Because I see both.
So on the 30 poll workers, I typically for an election have at least 30 poll workers. For the town election this year, I asked for a waiver, since many did vote by mail and didn't have to come. For a town election, you know, we may be able to do that. For a state, I wouldn't be able to do that. So we would definitely, I'd say, have the 30. If you're going to have it on a dual, you may have more than 30, because we still have to have two voting lists. So we cannot check them off on one voting list. So if they're coming in to vote for the state primary and they're going to vote for the town election, they will be checked in on one voting list for the primary, and then they would be asked, do you want the town election ballot? Some may say, no, I'm not interested in that. Some may say yes, and then they go through the check-in process there. So they would literally be handed two ballots if they're voting both elections.
Okay, Mr. Chair, through you back to Mrs. Grimo. So basically, what I'm looking at is if we, you know, if we had it as a dual date, which is something that I'd prefer we did, because I think we're going to get a lot better turnout, we're definitely going to need at least 30 poll workers and potentially maybe five or 10 more. If we had it as a separate election, we would need at least 30 poll workers for the primary. And I'm guessing we'd probably need at least 15 to 20 for the special election. So even then, we'd still be utilizing less poll workers by doing the dual election. So I guess, and I'm not trying to persuade anyone, but I just feel like the decision is, I think, more of, where do we think we'll get the best results and best turnout? Because cost-wise, I don't think there's a big difference between the two. And if anybody else wants to chime in, I'm happy to hear it.
Is there any other board comment or questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, is this Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you. So first of all, I am very happy to see this agenda item, you know, tonight. I think it's important that we move forward. I know that, you know, either the Board of Selectmen can, can, it's not shall, schedule it, but I think it's important that we do. We have two vacancies. I'm looking at it right now from the COVID perspective. I don't think that we can be ready to do an election in August. I mean, when I heard that Phase 2 was starting today, I thought we were full swing into Phase 2. And now even Phase 2 is being phased into multiple stages. So my concern is that we don't know where the government will be in August and what people will be comfortable with in doing. I know that the House of Representatives took action on early voting this week, and it overwhelmingly passed through the House. I know that the Senate will be dealing with that this week. And early indications are that, you know, Senate leadership fully supports early voting, which I think played a significant role in our most recent town election. I think it's important that people have an opportunity to vote, but also feel safe. So I, and I've always appreciated the work that Mrs. Grimo does, and I continue to support the work she does. I know that a dual election on primary day will be a challenge, but I have the utmost confidence in her that she could do that. My concern is if we push off filling these seats after the primary, we've just, we're at risk now of, you know, something, God forbid, happened to one of us. We're down to a two-member board. I think we need to get this done. I'm concerned about having it done in August. And I, you know, it makes sense to have it in September, but it doesn't make sense to me to have two elections in September. Do we wait until October, while you've got an election in September, October, and November? I just feel that August is too soon with still coming out with the reopening of government in phases. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. I did have a couple of questions. And before I actually ask a question, this afternoon or earlier this morning, we did get a petition with over 200 signatures requesting a special election, a citizens' petition. So that is in the hands of the Town Manager Board of Selectmen's office as of today.
I'm sorry, through the chair, I can do something. It actually goes directly to the clerk's office to start with.
No, hold on, can I pipe in? It went to the protocol that it should have. It is supposed to go to the Board of Selectmen first, which in turn turns it over to us.
Right, so it has been turned over, just so everyone knows, it's been turned over to the clerk's office. So before, the protocol is the clerk's office goes through and certifies the signatures before it's officially given to the board. So it did go through the right process there and it is with the clerk's office right now. Thanks, Mr. Chairman, I'll mute.
Okay, yes, I spoke with the town clerk today. I did mention to one of the organizers who went through the difficult task during COVID to collect these signatures that the board had already or was planning on, and we have had discussions on a special election. But we do have that petition in hand at this point. Okay. My question first of all is, from my understanding, we do not have adequate funding in the town clerk's item or the elections item to cover these additional costs. So I am fully in support and was fully in support before our meeting, yeah, our reorganization meeting to have a special election. My only concern or my thought is I would like to kind of identify or ask through the manager where these funds are going to come from. I would like to see the hours match the, if we do do the state primary, that they be the exact same hours, which I think is practical. I also have a question as to, we're talking about how many ballots, town ballots we need to order. At what point will that decision need to be made? And when would, provided we do the primary day as our second election, when will nomination papers be available?
I mean, as soon as you vote on a date, then we would, you know, set a date on, you know, taking out nomination papers, which would be fairly quick, and how long they stay open, you know, we would do the whole election calendar. As far as knowing how many ballots, it's hard to say because you don't know how many people are going to be coming to the primary. I mean, we can look at past years, but it's very hard to tell how many people are going to show up at a state primaries. And, you know, it is September 1st, which schools haven't started, so they still could be out of town. I mean, at this point, we'd probably base it on the 7,000 ballots.
Through the chair, to answer your question regarding funding, I'll have Ed Kaczynowicz, the Assistant Town Attorney and CFO, chime in here. But we would have to determine what that cost is based on whatever decision the board makes this evening. And then I believe we're going to have to go to the Finance Committee for a transfer because the funds were not adjusted in the original budget. So we will have to identify the source of those funds and then seek a transfer approval from the Finance Committee. Ed, please jump in if I missed anything.
Can everyone hear me? I just want to make sure my audio is working.
I can hear you, Ed.
Okay, thank you. Certainly, based upon town meetings actions last week, budget has been set. That budget is estimated or was recommended based upon a certain number of elections that we knew of. This was not known at the time. That being said, there will definitely be a shortfall and it's going to require some type of transfer. What's complicated about it at this point, not knowing what the level of cuts are going to be based upon a revised revenue plan, once certain information becomes available. The only place we could really go at this point in time is the reserve fund. So a transfer would need to be submitted to the Finance Committee. I would hate to think what would happen if that was not approved. We wouldn't have adequate funds in order to hold an election, so. There's some uncertainties relative to that, but we would either have to find money within the existing budget, whether it be reduced hours in the department or whether we would rely on a reserve fund transfer.
Thank you, Mr. Kaczynowicz. One last question. Mrs. Goodrich brought up early voting, which the town clerk said currently is not allowed for the primary, but will be for the general election. We have an estimate of anywhere between 13,000 and 15,000 for this election. How, do you have any idea how early voting in the primary and the town election, the special election, would affect your budget as you have it on the report?
As, at this point, there is no early voting scheduled or approved other than the general election. Like Mrs. Goodrich said, it is in legislation right now. They are hoping to get possibly five days of early voting for September. However, it isn't in there yet. They'd probably know that in the next week or two. But at this point, early voting and depending on how it's going to be, but for the town election, there was, you know, costs as far as mailing out early voting by mail. Prior years, well, when it started in 2016 in November for the general election, we had approximately 3,500 people that came in and early voted in person. Again, we don't know what's going to happen with the COVID, whether or not it will be how, if it's going to be early voting by mail because the strict laws on early voting by mail. They did make and allow exceptions for municipal elections that were scheduled until June 30th, which allowed you to send out your ballots as soon as you got the application or the ballots. But typically you can't send out an early voting ballot by mail until the time that early voting is open. So at this point, I can't answer what's going to happen for early voting for a September election because right now it hasn't been approved. November, yeah, I mean, if you had mentioned, talked, having or thinking about possibly having it in October. If you were going to have it in October, I would suggest probably the very beginning of October because in that legislation, they are talking about expanding early voting for the general election. And now, right now, you know, in biennial years, you can have it for up to 12 days. So if they expand that, that means more days in October, which would pretty much takes up most of October because the general election is November. Does that answer your question?
Well, I was hoping for a ballpark, I'll be honest with you. I know, so we have had early voting at some point. So what is, what is the general cost? Obviously, I know.
Right, the general cost for a November election, when they are voting in person just with election workers is about 2,000. And then on Election Day, I need extra people, so I'm going to need at least, at least probably 10 extras to process ballots and check them in. Because they, again, early ballots are not supposed to be checked in on regular voting lists, they're on separate lists.
Okay, so.
You'll have a checking list for the primary, a check-in list for the town election, and then the early voting ballots have to be checked in on a list of their own.
Okay, so this could. Mr. Barthium?
Yes, so again, you know, what I'm hearing is that, you know, early voting is just an additional cost. We don't have to have early voting. We set up the day for everyone to be able to go and vote on that particular day. It was done a lot in the past and, you know, I don't, I don't feel like, especially where we're trying to look for budget and look for, you know, ways to do this and do it fairly and do it, you know, for the least amount of money, I don't feel like we need to do mail-in voting. We make the polls open for the primary as if, as we do for the special election and, you know, we hope that it's a nice day and great voter turnout and that's, you know, when we have the election. You know, we don't need to add costs for mail-in voting.
Can I say something to that? If it is approved.
Hold on, Mrs. Gremo, let, hold on one second. Just let Mr. Barthium finish his thought and then I will recognize you, please. So Mr. Barthium, finish your thought and then, then we'll go to the town clerk, please.
Yeah, so I mean, I just feel like, you know, if we, if, number one, combine it, we can combine some of the expenses there. We don't have a budget there, but we, but we do have a budget for the primary. So let's utilize as much of that as we can. If they allow for the, for the mail-in and it's required by the state that we have to give it, then we're going to have to, like Mr. Kaczynowicz said, we're going to have to look for the money. But if it's, if they allow it, but it's not, you know, a mandatory thing, then, then we don't expend that money. So I think that we can set a special election date, hopefully to be the same as the dual date. But we don't, we can, we can make a couple other decisions budgetary as we go. And that's, that's my thought. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Gremo, please.
Okay, that's all I was going to say. If they do approve early voting and the election is on primary, you would have to allow it for the town election.
Okay, yes, my point in bringing it up is obviously we're doing a dual election. So if there was a early voting idea or bill passed and the governor signs it, obviously, we do need to be thinking it further ahead. And to Mrs. Goodrich's point on COVID-19, I think people will be nervous about going to the polls and we need to make sure that as we talk about fair and open elections, that we're conscious of the fact that it's our job to serve the public and, you know, early voting, I'm just trying to get round figures. I'm not saying we're voting to authorize early voting, which I don't believe we have the authority to do as a board anyways. I'm just trying to get in my own mind what we're looking at and where we're looking for money. Because personally for me, cutting the town clerk's department hours, which I know is not a decision, it's just thrown out as an example. For me, you know, the public needs the town clerk's office to be open, the hours that they're open. So I would certainly not want to see us take a draconian step as a town, not necessarily us as a board, to make changes to, you know, our operations on that. But that's not for us to decide. I fully understand that, but just wanted to weigh in on that. If the board is comfortable, unless there's more, more questions, I will entertain a motion on this item? Yes, Mrs. Goodrich?
Just make, just a couple additional observations. So, so if we are looking to, well, first of all, we came into the meeting tonight ready to, I believe, prepared to schedule an election to fill the two vacancies. So I just want to be clear on that. What we've learned tonight is that there has been a petition submitted that we are now required to call a special election. I mean, the board would have done this anyway, but now with a petition, we are required. So, so where, you know, and I, and I don't mean to be glib about this, but where the money comes from, doesn't matter, we're required now to call a special election. We have to do it if we in fact do have, you know, will know when the town clerk certifies this petition, but we do need to call this election. Again, we came into this meeting tonight absolutely ready to call a special election. We all agree it's very important. We're a three-member board, we need to fill these vacancies. As I stated previously, I am not in support of holding an August meeting if members feel that they need to make, need additional information, only if they feel they need additional information. Certainly if we vote on this on our June 22nd meeting, that still gives, I believe I counted it out, 71 days, which still meets a requirement of the 64 days to hold the election on the You know, if, if there are concerns, be it where the money comes from, what the actual costs are, I'm willing to hold it to the next meeting. I would support a member who didn't feel they had enough information, but I'm also ready to move forward tonight in support of scheduling it for the primary. But if, if all three members aren't comfortable, I'm also willing to hold it until our meeting on the 22nd. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, thank you. And I don't take it as glib, I'm just for myself, I think it is a consideration that we should be, this is something that potentially can affect peoples and, you know, people I know don't think $20,000 or $15,000 is a lot of money. It's a lot of money to me. And obviously, when I look at the budget, there are positions that only get paid $15,000 for a full-time position. So that could have a real impact. So to me, I'm happy to move forward. If there is a motion to schedule this, I'm happy to entertain it, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So I'll go ahead and make that motion that we hold a dual election. I believe it's on schedule for September 1st, which is the Tuesday before Labor Day, that we hold a dual election to have the special election at the same time as the national primary election.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Barthium. Is there a second to that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that, but just I want to be sure of the language. It's a state, is it state primary, correct?
Yes.
That would be the only one.
I'll amend that to say the same as the state primary.
Okay, so there is a motion and a second. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Barthium?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. We have scheduled the meeting for, or the special town election for State Primary Day, September 1, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. Thank you, Mrs. Gremo, for this report and for all the effort it took to create it. And thank you to the members and to staff for your input. It's very helpful. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Our next item is item 6A, which is involving a municipal Our next item is item 6A, which is involving a municipal vulnerability preparedness action grant. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Jacobson for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have, as you know, I believe it was one of my goals last year, was to get the designation as an MVP community. And as a result of that, we're eligible for applying for various grants through the state. We're currently in the middle of a grant now that I believe we're gonna talk about on item 6C. But this also, the state has announced that we are eligible to apply for the next round of grant funding. So I'm going to turn it over, if I may, Mr. Chair, to Adam Menard, our town planner, as he has been working on this with a number of employees in the town to make sure we don't miss this grant opportunity.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobson. Mr. Menard?
Yes, thank you. So this proposed project, we're working with Fosse O'Neill, who is a consultant for the current MVP project we're working on. Part of this grant will be a continuation of the current MVP program. Part of it will be to do the civil engineering of a replacement to the culverts over Calbrook at Sword Street. And the other portion will be to engage the community regarding water quality improvements to Leesville Pond. So it's an educational initiative to Leesville Pond area residents, both in Auburn and in Worcester, to educate them and anyone else who's interested on improving the water quality of that area.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Menard or Mrs. Jacobson, before I open it up to board members?
The only thing I would say is I just want to thank the board because you did make this a priority for us about a year and a half ago, and it really will pay dividends. Projects that Adam just outlined are critical. We've had them on our radar screen for quite some time. We've been trying to find funding mechanisms to address some of the culvert issues down at Sword Street. So this certainly would be a great opportunity for us to take that on.
Thank you. Is there any board member comment or questions on this item?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you. I just want to congratulate the town manager and all those involved. It just seems that no matter what is thrown at them, whether they need to close downtown hall, create a kiosk for pickup, they're still able to stay on track in seeking out additional funding, grants, et cetera. And we truly have a bunch of professionals working for the town of Auburn. And I just wanted to say thank you. I fully support this.
Thank you.
If there is a motion, I will entertain it. We need to vote to authorize. Yes, Mr. Berthew?
I'll make a motion to authorize, accept, and expend the 2020 MVP action grant funds from Mass Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs and have, give a board vote on letter of support.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It is unanimous. Thank you. Moving right along, item 6C is an informational item only, and this is for Mrs. Jacobson. And so I will turn it over to her.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I'm gonna actually, if anyone has any questions, Adam Menard is on this. But again, this is related to the MVP program. We currently are working with a consultant on a couple of different projects through the current grant. And one is to develop a draft best management practices to protect our drinking water supply areas. The town has posted this on its website, and I believe we've actually put something out also on our social media and Auburn Community Television, just asking people to take a look at the draft. It's on our website. And if anyone has any comments, they can submit their comments to us. Again, this is an MVP grant that we've been working on for many months now, and we're nearing the finish line on it, but we are seeking public input on the draft. So if anyone has any questions, I would say specifically turn it over to Adam. But Adam, is there a deadline for when you need the comments by?
There is a Mr. Suffolk deadline. We are trying to wrap this stays up. So I would say given till the end of next week, there'll be about two weeks to comment, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any board member questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing none. That was informational only. So thank you, Mr. Menard, for joining us tonight and for, I'm sure, what has been a lot of hard work on those items. So thank you very much. And thank you, Mrs. Jacobson, for bringing it to our attention.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. We are now going back to item, Board of Selectmen, item 5D. And just for clarification, the reason we we kind of did this in the hot scotch, man, we did is because certain staff are on certain one of these, and they're on more than one, so it was just easier to group them that way. 5D is a plastic bag reduction bylaw delay request. I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Jacobson for any background on this. I know we have a memo on it as well. Thank you.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, there is a memo in your packet from Darlene Coyle, our GDIS director and public health director, regarding the plastic bag ban, our delay request. So just to summarize, and any specific questions could be answered by Darlene, but just to summarize, the state is still and currently looking at some potential recommendations and maybe some potential regulations related to plastic bags during the COVID-19 crisis. So our recommendation is, we're seeking approval of the board to just delay the implementation of this, which I believe was going to be by July 30. So we are seeking to extend that at least throughout the next few months until we find out more information from the state as to how they're gonna handle these. Many communities across the Commonwealth are delaying their implementation or voting to just stop it temporarily because of the COVID-19 issue, because of the reuse of bags, and the concern with reusing anything right now as opposed to a one-time use. So if you, if I may, Mr. Chairman, could I ask Darlene to elaborate on anything? Because the Board of Health did take a, have a discussion on this and take a position on this.
Mrs. Coyle?
Thank you very much, Julie. And through the chair. So we, as you know, spent a lot of time working on the plastic bag ban bylaw. And there was a lot of input and a lot of support for that. And that was set to go into effect at the end of July. And within the past three-plus months, the pandemic has had a huge impact on everything, including the plastic bag ban. In March, the end of March, the governor had put into place, kind of early on, what I call the grocery order. And in that, it identified restrictions and precautions that grocery stores had to take, and including in those temporary ban on the plastic bags, any municipal ordinances or regulations. And they also did not allow people to bring in their reusable bags. You know, kind of the opposite of what we usually say. We're usually encouraging residents to, you know, bring in their reusable bags to cut down on the amount of plastic that is being used. So it kind of, everything kind of flipped because of the concern and uncertainty around the, around reusing bags. And to be safe for everybody, they wanted to have just the use of brand-new plastic bags. So obviously, we all are at the supermarket, and you're seeing how many more bags that you're bringing home, because you can't do reusable bags. Obviously, understandable because of the severity of the virus and taking every precaution that you possibly could. Also, as part of this, the Board of Health discussion around this, COVID-19 has kind of put a strain on everybody, and especially businesses. You know, there are essential businesses that were allowed to stay open throughout the pandemic. And we are heading into phase two starting today. But there's been considerable economic strife that has been put on to businesses. So, you know, taking into consideration the state, the state order, the toll that businesses have taken, and, you know, not really knowing what the state may come out with. We want to see what they are going to advise going forward with the bag bylaws. The Health has discussed this and wanted to bring to the Board of Selectmen for your consideration about taking, about taking a possible vote to delay enforcement of the ban until we get more information. I think I had suggested until at least January. But obviously, that is for the board to decide. I'm happy to hear any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Thank you both. Is there any board questions or comments on this?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Berthew.
So thank you, Mrs. Coyle. And, you know, well explained. And obviously, we're doing a lot of things differently because of COVID, and we're instituting things back in, in a systematic way. So with that, and having read the memo that that we have, I would make a motion that we hold the enforcement of the plastic bag reduction bylaw indefinitely. Once we get an okay by the governor, then at a future meeting, we can discuss setting an actual date. I just, I don't want to set a date. Well, let me make the motion first. To, so let me just make the motion of holding the enforcement of the plastic bag reduction law until indefinitely.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there anything further from members or staff?
And through you, Mr. Chair. I'll just say that the reason I don't want to put a date is because then we may just end up having to do this and vote again. So I'd rather, you know, obviously, we're not looking for this to go away. But as soon as we get some news from the governor saying that, you know, we can put it back on, and then the Health Department gets a chance to, you know, speak with the retailers and businesses, and we can come up with a fair and reasonable date, then we'll definitely vote for that date to begin. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. There's a motion. There's a second. Hearing no further discussion. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It is unanimous. All right. Thank you. Moving right along, we have item 6B, which is a town manager item, and it involves an update on the town of Auburn Solid Waste Collection and Disposal. I'm gonna turn this over to Mrs. Jacobson, and we'll take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can everybody hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure, I just want to let you know, I had a little trouble with my phone, so I still have the audio. I'm working on the video. So I'm glad you can hear me. So this item is a follow-up to several previous items and discussions that we've had with the board over the last several months. Just letting you know that the solid waste contract was expiring this coming June 30. So the Board of Health, the Division of Public Health, along with the Solid Waste Committee, have all been working for the last many, many months to identify and solicit proposals from other solid waste vendors, to analyze those proposals, and to come back with a recommendation for a contract. So we have actually been able to do that. And as of a couple of days ago, I think Thursday, we actually executed the contract. So once again, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to turn it over to Darlene Coyle to just give the highlights. I know much of this is in your packet, but just a brief highlight and to let the public know what we are doing with this contract.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Coyle?
Thank you very much, Julie. So as, as many of you know, we have, we have a solid waste contract that is coming to the end. We have five years that is, the contract is expiring. We were fortunate to be able to get several contractors' proposals for new solid waste and recycling contract. Over the past, over the past several years, we have, we have been working through the contract and also identifying things that may not have, we may not have faced years ago. And one of those is recycling. So recycling processing costs, I know you've heard me talk about in the past, it is a different landscape for recycling. In the past several years, recycling has been handled differently in municipal contracts. So recycling that was free, actually, in our last contract, the existing contract, I should say, is now going to incur a cost going forward. We have been watching this, and we are, we are expecting that with this increased cost, we knew that we had to take some action to increase our education and connection with the residents. So as you may know, in the past several years, we were able to get a grant through Department of Environmental Protection that allowed us to, for the first time, have some, to be able to go out into the field to see what was happening at the curb and to be able to interact with customers and residents in the community to help them understand what items belonged in trash, what items belonged in recycling, and to help be able to answer just general questions. Because there's a lot of questions regarding solid waste and what happens at the curb. So that was several years ago. We were fortunate enough to hire a solid waste and recycling coordinator last year, and that person is designated to be out on the road five days a week. And that has really helped us to be able to make the connection for the unknown. So when people don't know what to do, sometimes they don't know where to call. We actually have a person that is able to stop, give some educational information. We have a lot of, a lot of really nice resource and tools that we get through Department of Environmental Protection. So that's been very positive. With the new contract, we had a focus with the Solid Waste Committee to make sure that we keep our, we keep improving customer service. We know that that's an important piece, and we want people to, you know, enjoy having this service. We feel, we're proud of the service. We know that we are all very committed and happy to be able to help people know what to do regarding solid waste and recycling. to do regarding solid waste and recycling. Also, in the new contract, we wanted to make sure that we increased our weight around the carts, the tota carts that everybody uses. So, some of them are aging from original contracts pre, so we have a provision in there to help with improve our inventory. We also, as part of this contract, looked at all of our municipal buildings to try to see if there was a way that we could reduce the amount of tonnage that we are generating and haven't picked up. In some cases, we were able to change the size of the container and possibly the frequency. So, all of those, all of those pieces help reduce costs and help us balance challenges and other. We know that the events is an important piece, and I think you all know, and you all participate on those townwide cleanup days, and the working with the chamber, and just generally having library events where, you know, we have touch a truck come out and so forth. So, we wanted to make sure that was an important piece that we kept going forward. We worked that into the contract as well. So, we are very happy that we are moving forward in a positive manner, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Coyle. Is there any Board questions, comments? Hearing none. I did have, yeah, am I hearing?
Mrs. Goodrich? Yes. I, yeah, just took me a second to unmute myself. Mrs. Coyle, if you can just take, and I put you on the spot all the time, but if you can just take this opportunity while we're discussing this, this new contract, if people have missed pickup, if they have an issue, who do they contact? Thank you.
Sure, thank you for the question. So, we will, in this new contract, we will have the vendor, the contractor, is going to be fielding those calls. So, that will be a little bit different than what we're doing now, and that will be as part of the educational information that we'll be putting out to the residents. Of course, people can always call our office, and we will, we will take care of any issues, but we will have those calls being handled at the contractor's level.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from Board members? Hearing none. Just a couple of questions through the Town Manager to Mrs. Coyle. I did notice we had some percentages of cost increase. I know we have a number of just under 7%, but we've budgeted a little more than that, which is always good. The question I have is, what is, do we know what the new rate is going to be for the individual toters, just so that the residents might prepare themselves? Because it looks like there'll be an increase of some sort.
Yes, thank you. So, we are, we are working out what the possible increases are. I don't have them exactly for toters. However, we do, we are trying to make sure that we identify people that have, sometimes there's a problem if somebody has a toter that has a broken lid, or, you know, the wheel is broke. Sometimes people don't call, sometimes they do, but if somebody doesn't call on town, I actually, this like last week, drove by a property, and they didn't have a lid on the toter. I actually asked our solid waste coordinator to follow up and address that, because what happens is if you don't have the lid and the lid isn't closed, as part of our rules, we, we have this, and we enforce this of having the lid closed, is because if we get a downpour of rain, the water goes into your trash or recycling, and if it comes into the trash, it's going to waterlog the trash. It actually makes it heavier, and you're actually paying by ton for the trash for disposal. So, we want to make sure that people have the right equipment, which is, we wanted to build that into this contract. We have done a lot of, in the past year, a lot done at the curb with our recycling cooler, to be able to fix them as though. So, while, you know, can't fix everything at once, we can, over time, make positive change. So, we do not have the cost of what the toter is, however, I will, I will get back to on what that is in the coming weeks.
Oh, thank you so much. I don't have any other comments or questions. I don't know if there's any last comments from Board members, or Mrs. Jacobson, or Mrs. Coyle, if you have any last.
I'm the one that's got all the volunteers who worked on this over the last several months, and we look forward to our new contract.
Thank you. All right. Well, we don't need a motion on this, but I would echo the manager's comments and say thank you to the Solid Waste Committee and on our prior item, the Board of Health, as well as staff in support of that effort, and the information that was included in our packet. I know that takes a lot of time to put that kind of material together, and it's always informative, so at least when we come to the meeting, we know the outline of what's going on, and then we can, we can move from there. So, I appreciate that, and thank you for all your hard work, and.
Thank you.
What's that?
Thank you very much.
I will say, hopefully, good night to some of the staff, so that they can enjoy some downtime before the clock starts again, but I appreciate everybody taking the time to come on and be available. I know that time away from your families and away from other activities, so it is appreciated. Going back to Agenda Item 5B, we have a Drain Layers License, and it looks like it's simply a name change. I don't know if Board members have any questions or concerns. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
I'll make a motion to approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that. And, Mr. Chair, the, just want to let people know that, and I know it has my name as that business, I am in no way related to the Berthium that is on that company or any of the Berthiums that are, seem to be officers of that company. So, just for the record, I feel comfortable in voting on this, as I do not have any contact or relation with these.
Thank you, Mr. Berthew. So, we have a motion, we have a second. Seeing no further discussion. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes, it is unanimous. Thank you. We go to Board of Selectmen Item 5C, which are Board and Committee Reappointments. We are fortunate to have two members of the Finance Committee who are willing to continue their service on that very important committee. Is there a motion to appoint?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Kevin Kennedy for Precinct One and Travis Sansui for Precinct Two for a term on the Finance Committee that expires on June 30th, 2023.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mrs. Goodrich?
Mr. Chairman, just under discussion?
Yes.
I just want to comment that, boy, they have their hands full with, with the issues that they'll be facing due to the COVID crisis, and we appreciate their volunteerism. And I vote yes.
Okay. And, Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes, it is unanimous. We have, we are fortunate to have also two existing members on the Zoning Board of Appeals who are volunteering to be reappointed to that very important board. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Ms. Megan Roach and Mr. Michael Maron to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term that expires on June 30th, 2023.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
And, Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes, it is unanimous. We have one final individual who is willing to be reappointed or is asked to be reappointed, which we're grateful for, to the Board of Registars. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion to reappoint Mr. Bay Allen for a term that expires June 30th, 2023, to the Board of Registars.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
And, Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes, it is unanimous. Okay. Looking at the rest of the agenda, it looks like we've done a good job of moving through the Agenda Items swiftly. Do any Board members have any last, anything?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, go ahead.
Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you. So, I know we met last week regarding the outdoors seeking of restaurants, and, you know, driving through town on my way home from work today, you know, I saw several restaurants with their tents up and their outdoor furniture, you know, and I'm very proud of the position we took to assist the business owners and give the residents an opportunity to get out, and if they so choose, you know, people aren't required to, but if they want to get out of their homes, there's, there's certainly, you know, strict regulations they have to follow, but it's a step in the right direction, and I'm proud of the vote we took last week.
Thank you. Mr. Berthew, you had something?
I just wanted to thank all the Board members and thank all of the staff again tonight. I know both you and Mrs. Goodrich thanked them, and I seem to not thank people often enough, because you beat me to it, but, you know, I do realize these are trying times, and, you know, and I want to apologize once again to Mrs. Greemo, for whatever reason, I have the wrong name in my head, and I'll probably end up honoring that 10 more times, but I do want to apologize to her for that, and I appreciate her answers tonight, and, you know, like Mrs. Goodrich said, we have high confidence that, you know, it's going to be probably a tough day for her, but we have the highest confidence that she'll do it as professionally as she's always done here in the town, as with Julie and all of the officers. It's just, we're very lucky with all the grants that our town continuously goes for. We're a very progressive town, and we're very fortunate to have the leadership that we have. So, I just want to make sure that everybody knows how appreciative I am of all of that. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Yes. Mrs. Jacobson, I just had one, one, one last thing, and it's, and it's more of a quote about what happened over the weekend. We had two successful and peaceful protests in Auburn, and I think that, a tribute to not only the folks that organized these events, but also to the professionalism of the staff that made sure everybody was safe, everybody was, you know, knew that they were there to be of assistance to them, and that we welcomed them to town, so I wanted to say that publicly, because I was at one of the protests, and it was a very positive event on Saturday, so I was very grateful for that and the positive feedback that I heard. So, that was, that was great, but I'll take a point of personal privilege for a minute and just hold you for another extra minute, but I was thinking of John Kennedy as we were doing all of these things, because, of course, we are in these difficult times, and his acceptance speech in 1960 in Los Angeles was, part of this quote is, "We are not here to curse the darkness, but to light the candle that can guide us through that darkness to a safe and sane future." And that just stuck in my head for whatever reason, and I wanted to ascribe that to the professionalism of the town staff, as well as to the folks that showed up and organized, and were here to be heard, and I certainly appreciated both sides of that divide were working together, and that's exactly what we need to resolve any issue going forward, large or small, so.
Thank you.
With that, I will, I'm sorry, Mrs. Jacobson, I was just going to say, is there anything else that, Mrs. Jacobson, please?
Thank you. I do. First of all, I want to thank all of you for your, for your kind words, and most especially for your support of all of us. It helps, as you said, these are trying times, it's really been a challenge, just to keep morale up and to keep, to keep everybody's spirits up in a very difficult situation, and I think our employees have done a phenomenal job. And to echo what you said, Mr. Carpenter and all of you, we want to thank our Police Department, our Fire Department, and the DPW for working with the protesters over the weekend to ensure everybody's safety and rights to have a peaceful protest. We were happy with the way everything turned out, and we thank them for the time and effort they put into it. If I may, Mr. Chair, I just want to add, and I'm going to get a notice out on this either tonight or tomorrow morning, but we had such success with our kiosk that we started last week. We started it with limited hours, 8:30 to noon, and we're finding that the public very much appreciates it. They want to be able to do business with us in person, but certainly, we're not ready, nor should we be opening our town hall yet. So, we are going to be expanding the hours of the kiosk, so I want the public to know, as of today, the kiosk is open from 8:00 to 4:00, Monday through Thursday, and then 8:00 to 1:00 on Friday. The town, excuse me, the Treasure Collectors Service Window that we installed, so you can access employees in the Treasure Collectors Office from outside, from the handicap ramp in the back of the town hall, we're expanding those hours as well. So, those hours are going to be back to regular town hall hours, which are 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM on Mondays, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Friday. So, those hours will be expanded, we will get something up for a notice on that, and also to let you all know that we, along with the Governor's Phase Two that was announced Saturday, all of our employees are no longer working remotely, everyone is back in the building. We've put all the precautions we needed to and taken all the measures that were required to do. We still have to do more, but we are following the Governor's guidelines. So, we are here full-time, we're still servicing the public remotely by telephone and through the kiosk. We're not ready to open to the public yet, because we still have several measures that would have to be put into place for us to do that, but I just want to let you know that we continue to service the public. We've gotten, received great feedback from the entire community on the kiosk, and it's worked out very well, so we'll continue to do that. And just lastly, to follow up on Mrs. Goodrich's comments, the Board, I just want to let the Board know, right after we took that vote on Thursday- right after we took that vote on Thursday night, on Friday morning, uh, the economic development coordinator, Shannon Regan, worked with the Division of Public Health, uh, in Jordan and Darlene to get a notice out and the letter to all of the license holders that were impacted by your vote Thursday night. So that went out Friday morning and it explains what vote you took and what the process is for moving forward to be licensed, excuse me, to be, uh, approved to have outdoor dining. So at this point, I think since Friday, we've worked with four, I believe there are four businesses that are now in town that are, have outdoor dining as we speak. So we encourage everyone to support your local businesses. Uh, the retailers are open under limited circumstances as well, but please support our local businesses. They're important to our economy. They're important to provide services to our residents. Our residents need those services and, uh, we hope that everyone continues to be vigilant, take all the precautions and at the same time, support the businesses as you feel comfortable doing that. And, uh, continue to do what you have to do to keep yourself and your family safe and we'll do the same thing for the employees and for the public. So thanks for that chance to just update you. Just want to get the word out there on the expanded hours for the kiosk and the outside service window at the treasure collectors office.
That sounds great. Thank you. All right. If there's nothing else, I, uh, let's entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Is there a second? Okay. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thanks, everybody, and have a great week and we'll talk again soon.
Thank you.
Have a good night.